Policies, look to see where we might need amendments, where we need to update, where we may want to create new policy. And we're going to start that. And that was an open meeting and the public was welcome to that portion of our meeting on Policy Workshop. And then we did enter executive session for a very brief time with our attorney on some legal matters. And now we are at the workshop presentations. So we're going to start tonight with a presentation on the annual audit results. Carl, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
Well, actually first, the first presentation is from Dr. Ellen McDonald.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry. I apologize. I was just going.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Then we have it backwards.
You're both right. Which one would you like?
We're queued up, but we have great news and that is that our Smart Schools Investment Plan was approved by New York State. Dr. McDonald is spearheading the spending plan and she is here also to show us a little bit more about the instructional technology that is being implemented here in Tocco. So Ellen, the stage is yours.
Thank you. So welcome, welcome. We brought a phone over and twice for you to enjoy. This is the Smart Aqueless Board and I figured we'd give you a sense of where we're headed this year with technology and Carl mentioned one of the things that's going on, but I figured we could just, you know, get ourselves started and tell you what's happening. The first thing before we get to Smart Schools is that last spring and into the summer, we were charged with writing an instructional technology plan that took over the years 2018 to 2021. And it required us to come up with three or more goals. It's a very different format than the state had had before. They actually gave all of us a year off from giving an annual update to our instructional technology plans. As you can imagine, if you write one multiple years out, instructional technology is going to be vastly different, right? Multiple years out. So though we are writing a three-year plan, we do need to update it every year. And so using results from surveys with teachers about professional development, Clarity Survey, which is a survey that went home to families, to students and to teachers about technology usage, both inside and outside the classroom, and conversations with our technology committee, we came up with these three goals. This plan has been approved by the state. They actually aren't due until the end of the month, but we got ours in, we got it approved, so we're in good shape. So these are three overarching goals for the next few years. Our first goal is a really pragmatic one. We have to work toward accessibility on our website using the guidelines from the Americans for Disabilities Act. The ADA has an awful lot of very specific guidelines for how communication needs to be accessible to all. And it's a great concept. Everyone who needs information about your school should be able to get it, whether they have a visual impairment, whether they have an auditory impairment, whatever the impairment they do, whatever we put on our website needs to be accessible. So it's a simple concept. However, the implementation of it can get quite complex. For example, our color orange, I'll just pull up our website real quick. I had to change this color orange by a couple of tints because the contrast to the white wasn't strong enough for the guidelines that we have to follow so that those with a more mild visual impairment that didn't need something to read it to them, but that they could read it, right? So we are in constant work on that and we will continue on that for the next three years. We've actually contracted with a company called Siteimprove that gives us rundowns on every page we have, what still needs to be fixed on it. And we're in constant conversation with Echoc, who are the people that host our site, because there are some things back end that we can't change, such as, one of the problems is their hardcoded color scheme. Once we pick our primary colors, Echoc chooses then the color that you see down here. That's not a large enough contrast sometimes. And so we're working with our vendor on the back of how saying, as an end user, I can't change that color contrast and it's out of compliance, I need you to fix it. So this used to be actually white on that light orange and now they changed it to black. So now there's a larger contrast. That's one very small example of the thousands of things that we need to keep track of on our website. But the basic idea is it has to be readable by an e-reader software. So there's a lot of tabbing and a lot of coding on the backend so that it doesn't jump from this word to this word to that word. It knows where the columns are so we can read to someone smoothly and we have to do a lot of the backend work on that. So our webmaster and myself are learning a lot, but it will take us quite a while to do that because there's always something you can do better on your website to make it more accessible. So we're working on that. The next goal that we made for ourselves was to redefine our curriculum instruction for Technology Ed K-12. We started this summer, actually, with middle school. Middle school has three new technology electives this year and really focusing on what I would call these three strands. Digital citizenship, how to be a good digital citizen. Computer science itself, which includes project-based learning, actual coding, things like that, working with robotics, things along those lines. Emily, I use this phrase in our plan, technical competencies. How do you keyboard, right? How do you use the software that's out there? How do I make a reasonable presentation out of slides or PowerPoint? Those sort of functional pieces that we want our kids to be able to use our technology for communication. So again, we made a decision last year to start at the middle level and that's what we did and we'll take that as the foundation for then modifying what we do with computers in K-5 and then how does that impact what we can offer at the high school level? So we began that work over the summer and will continue for the next three years. And our third one is, is what I call the fun one. All right, this is the one that I don't have to change every year because it's always about doing something new. So next year it'll probably be the same as that goal. Continually explore new and flexible technology for new learning spaces. Always be looking for what's next and not only just what is it fun for or good for, but how will it impact learning? What are we going to do to impact how our kids learn? So, one of the things that we did in doing that, and let's talk about the third goal first, is we did a lot of space moving this summer that was talked about at our last board meeting and one of the things that was referenced is a lot of us in central office moved our offices. So I do have a desk, but I no longer have an office. So my desk is in the former middle school principal's office and that is by my choice and my design. And I've turned that room into what we're calling the Tiger Lab, which stands for Technology Integration for Growth and Excellence for Research Lab. So the room has all sorts of things in it. This is actually a Chromebook that's attached to a document camera that a kid could just borrow and say, hey, my small group wants to be able to see what we're looking at. And they can just take pictures of the hard copy and transfer it to electronic. We don't want to do that. We want to go under here. So as we said, this is what it stands for, just in case you couldn't figure out the Tiger Lab. It took a long time getting Tiger as an acronym to work for what I wanted, right? I think I got it. But basically here's our point. The purpose of the lab is to provide a space for teachers to try out new technology and active learning space furniture before we invest on a larger scale implementation. Because one of the things that can happen in a district is a teacher goes to a conference, they learn about this way cool new thing, they just come back and say, buy me a class set. And we say, okay. And we get it and then it's it. So the idea behind the Tiger Lab is to get one or something, or a few of something. Run professional development sessions in the lab where teachers can come and then say, all right, well, what would this do to instruction? How will your classroom look different if I get this for you? If this district invests in this product, what would change for kids? So everything in the lab actually has one of these QR codes or they can go to the link or whatever. Anything that they try, a teacher or staff member needs to fill out a feedback form, which is simple. What did you try? What features of it did you like? What features do you think it's missing? So then we have that data. So when we go into budget conversations in January and February with Ms. Lou, we're able to say, all right, we tried out four different boards. Here's what these are good for. We tried out all different kinds of little robotics. Here's the ones we think will work best in the lab. So that's what we're excited about. So I figured I'd just show you one today. But one of the things I want to have our students do is to be able to figure out what I call, I can't walk away from this kind of, sorry. The iterative nature of project design. How you don't get it right the first time, all right? And that you have to keep trying new things. Here, if I go to a microphone over here, will you be able to hear me? Can you hear me online? Okay.
I just want to pull the chair up.
I think I'll do this. Okay. So someone recommended to me an Ozobot. So I'm going to show you the box first. This little guy is an Ozobot, all right? Teeny, teeny, tiny little dude, right? The idea behind this bot is that you actually program him by drawing. That's all you do. He follows the black line till he hits some other colors and then depending on the order that you put those colors, it will tell him to do something else, right? So it came with all these fabulous pieces of paper. And if I were going to do it, whatever one might consider the right way, I would start with page one, then I would go to two, and I would go to three. So I started with that. Page one told me how to prepare him. So whenever he gets confused, I can just stick him on the black dot to sort of reset him, right? Because he gets confused sometimes with colors. All right, I could handle that. I could put him on the dot and figure that out. Page two gave me some tips on drawing. Can't be too skinny, can't be inconsistent. Okay. All right, I can handle that. Page three then started to tell me what to do. And that's when I decided I was done with the sheets. Because what we want kids to do is for them to figure out what to do, to give them materials and supplies. And these are the ideas for that new innovation lab for Cottle that you're going to start building hopefully next summer, is to say, here's some stuff, we have a goal, you figure out how to get there. So I skipped some pages and just got myself to page eight, which told me some of what some color combinations could do. And then I had a problem. Because he came with markers, which meant he needed a lot of paper. Because if I'm going to draw something and then I'm going to put colors on it and it doesn't work, I get to throw the piece of paper out and get another piece of paper. Not too keen on that amount of paper going out. So as I would hope a kid would do, I started thinking, well, what else could I use? And I said, well, you know what? We got whiteboards everywhere and we can use markers. So I did that. And as soon as I put him on one, he scraped the marker off. So again, I had to think, okay, what am I going to do? And I thought, well, what's sitting in every teacher's closet somewhere is overhead transparency plastic? We've got thousands of these things probably sitting in closets all over this district. So I was able to then draw something, put plastic on top so he wouldn't hurt it anymore and he could actually then start to go. And then he's doing a little happy dance because he made it to the end of the line. So that process, right, of saying, all right, here's some stuff, I want to be able to draw, but I don't want to waste paper. I want to be able to have a kid go, ah, that didn't work, and just erase it and draw something new and not worry about the waste of paper. And thinking through a problem and knowing, I got to try again and again. That one that he just did, that little piece, I drew up here, the colors weren't dark enough, so he ignored them. I had to make them darker, right? Like, I want that for kids, for them to be able to think, huh, what could I do? And who knows what they'll make this little guy do at some time? And we can start that in kindergarten because they don't need to learn line-by-line coding for drawing. And they know that red, green followed by red makes him do the little happy dance at the end. Right? I can do that. I can put that wherever I want. That's the kind of thing we're going to do in the lab is as adults, play with things and then figure out, so what is it that I want kids to get out of this? What is it that I want my students to learn, to know, be able to do, and would this tool do that for me? So he's not the only bot that's down there. I have another set of bots, sandbots that are down there, also similar, small designed items, a little more on the programming, using computer block moving. And we'll decide. We'll see, well, what do we think at what grade levels? Could different things be good for? How will they be helping kids learn that there might be an answer, the teacher doesn't know yet, to this problem? And that's what I want to do. To think, I can have my own answer and it doesn't have to be my teacher's answer. So that's sort of just a demo of what the space is about. The piece that Mr. Alvano pointed out is that our Smart Schools Investment Plan was finally approved. Two years in the making, it was finally approved. We last touched it a year and a half before it was approved. And so just to remind those at home who may not have memorized the facts of it, we have about $220,000 that the state allocated our district and it's through a reimbursement structure. So what we have is basically four things that we had agreed and the board had approved back in, when was that, March of 2017, were these four things. Sorry? No, no, it's okay. It's okay. First of all, a new district server. Our server needed to be upgraded and so that's coming. We are putting voiceover IP, public address systems and phones. It's a combination piece that its speakerphone is a PA, but it also has access to the outside world into every classroom that does not have one. It's 54 classrooms that we identified did not have them back in March of 2017. We will now be able to outfit them. High-level security is one of the features we could use the month for. We also put in for some video security upgrades. We have some blank spots in the video coverage within the buildings. Those were identified back in the fall, actually, of 2016. And so that is in that funding structure. And then a large chunk of, about half of it, is to replace the smart boards. This is one option that you're looking at right now from Sharp. So one of the things that we're doing in the lab is having vendors send us one for a month. So this board made by Sharp was brought in right before our teachers came back. We ran two PD sessions on the board during our superintendent's conference days and people could go at this and say, well, what was it about the board that you liked? Because as we look at our aging, and it is aging, our smart boards are 10 years old. Many of them were purchased in 2008 and that's a long time. Many of them have had their projectors replaced, actually. That's how we've been able to keep them alive because the board hasn't died, the projectors have died. But this is one option. This was actually supposed to go away. Last Thursday, we were going to pick it up. Like I said, oh, I'm going to talk about it on Monday. Can I please keep it till then? So they're coming to get it on Tuesday and a different brand is coming Wednesday. So the other aspect of the Tiger Lab is constantly getting different things to try, are going to be in there. And so this is how we're going to select our smart board replacements. As I said, each month, two different vendors are going to send us a board. It's going to be in the Tiger Lab. They're all going to be movable, so if someone wants to borrow it for a couple of days and try it in the classroom, they're more than welcome to. They're going to then fill out, you know, the survey, telling us what they liked about it versus didn't like about it. Because we might get them a different one than the one they tried, but we'll make sure we get the features that make sense. And the biggest difference from what we did before to what we do now is we will no longer be using a single company's devices in all of our classrooms. Every classroom has a product made by the Sharp, by the Smart Company right now. They're all Smart branded boards. The industry has ballooned since Smart started with their products and they know it and they're going to send a board and leave them on for December. But there are so many out there. Clear Touch is sending a board next, new one I think is coming in November. But they're all going to send us boards for us to try. So we can really be thoughtful about what features teachers use, because different teachers use technology differently. So if someone just needs to present but doesn't need to touch, I'll get you a less expensive board, but maybe then there's other technology I can get for your classroom if we save the money on that. Or you only want to do what I'm doing right now, which is just touching and moving through things, then you don't need a lot of the graphical pieces. So you will see different things in different classrooms moving forward in a very cost-efficient manner. Instead of just saying, let's just get the new smart board because we've always had Smart and spend six grand. This guy's only three grand, just half the cost of a corporate smart board. So that's what we're doing with that. Other aspects of the Tiger Lab, so you know what else we're doing there? The small tech pieces, you'll see if you, I'll actually pull up our, we made a website for it. Not only are we doing that, we have handheld, they're projectors, but they're about this big. The idea being that they hook into Chromebooks. So a group of kids could go to their teacher and say, can I borrow the mini projector? And they take the Chromebook and that over to a wall, five kids stand around, look at the projection of what they're talking about to do a little back and forth and say, okay, yeah, I see what you're talking about. Boom, bring it back to the teacher. That's $300, not $3,000, right? So we're looking at small tech pieces in there a lot. That'll be changing every month. We're doing student furniture also in there. You might have noticed in the pictures that some decisions were made by faculty at the secondary level as to color concepts last spring. So in the lab right now are different shapes. And I've told the teachers, if you have no thought of a change of instruction, I'll just buy you a rectangle, right? They're cheaper. But if you have different shapes and it causes you to think about how children can collaborate differently, because with different configurations we can make with the shapes, now we have a purpose for use and we will then get you different shapes. So people will come down and try out the furniture, including different kinds of chips. The rotating materials and inventory is a key aspect to the whole place. So these are just some shots of some of the things that are down there. This is actually a dry erase table. It's at elementary level height. That's actually where I first demoed Ozobot, was on the table itself. Next to that, it looks like an old-fashioned telephone because it does look exactly like an old-fashioned telephone, but it is a headset. We found that kids, I was talking to people in another district, kindergartners and first graders, when they put dual headsets on, really are in their own world and are very nervous to speak into something like that. But they'll chat for hours holding that thing up. They think it's like a banana. They don't notice like, oh, ba-ba-ba-ba. They can record themselves, hear themselves back and they're happy to do it. This is one of our new shapes. We call it the Fig Eight because they can fit in different shapes. That's example of the small projector that I was talking to you about, that can project up on the wall. And so it's going to look different pretty much every single month. That's just some examples of what it looks like now and the things we're excited to bring. I'm so excited you're going to be talking so fast. I'm so excited about what we're doing. I'll slow down now. Go ahead.
Do you see any, Mr. Alvano, do you see any educational applications to the VR?
Yes. I mean, Google has come to us with their whole VR system. They have a whole VR system where they can go on virtual field trips. So our kids have gone through, which is pretty cool.
So we have that?
We do not own the full set, no. So in order to, right, we've demoed it. We were actually part of the first group of school pilots for Google Expeditions about a year and a half ago. Very first. And one of the cool things that now we were waiting for is that Google has now allowed that if a child, anybody, goes somewhere and actually takes some surround video, we can upload it into Google Expeditions so then your classmates can go where you went. If you went to Greece, then they could stand around and look at what you looked at.
So is that something you see us adopting soon?
Sure. I think one of the things that makes that the most possible is one thing I want to do this year is to run a donation drive of old phones because that's the piece that you need. So people are willing to wipe their phones. We can use them as just Wi-Fi devices because we need those to go into, it's one of the cheapest ways, instead of buying the actual full VRs, is to put those into Google Hardboard and then people are, you know, we do a little donation drive of old phones. Please clean them up. We don't want to see the pictures of Grandma's hundred purple. And then we could write them, build the pieces for that. But it is designed to be run from a device, a tablet that the teacher has, so the teacher can control where you are and if they want to point at something, they'll literally put an arrow on, say, everybody turn and look to the arrow. Look at these craters. Our teachers had a fabulous time with that.
That's really exciting.
And that's exciting. Taking kids where they can't actually go is pretty cool. Under the sea is calm. And it's a historical places that, you know, are long gone.
So how do you find out? Is there a method for you to find out what the latest and greatest educational technology tool are? Is there one place that you go where you just kind of?
That's a really good question. There's not one place, no, there isn't. What we do have in this area is a wealth of knowledge and expertise from my colleagues in different districts, right? So we have a very, very healthy group of technology educators and directors such as myself who are constantly sharing how to do this. The concept of building this actually came from a colleague of mine, a former colleague I used to work with way back in the day, Adam Pease, who's now the Assistant Superintendent. He was in Mayapack and they built a room like this. He's now in Chautauqua. But I just told him last week, I said, you realize I gave him a walk this because of you? And he said, well, I said, no, we had to have a space where people could come and try some things out and take those chances.
So I would imagine one of the ways to find out is new is vendors coming to you. But I get concerned because we're such a small school district, we're going to seem like a good target for people.
It's interesting how much free stuff is in the lab right now. Yes, I have been pleasantly surprised at how many people have sent us things to just have us try. Yep. And so I also go out to usually about, probably this year I'll go to a few more tech conferences than I did, you know, I didn't have so much time before, to gather all of that and see what's new, what are we going to put in the lab and try out. And what's also nice, one of the things we're doing that Mr. Alvano and I talked about that we're committing to, is running professional development at minimum once a month in the lab where people can sign up for and get that one hour of in-service credit so they can always see what's new. And then from that, our teachers will say, for example, they'll see me show them five things in an hour and say, Ellen, can you run a five-hour workshop on the Ozobots? I think we could do something with that in the second grade. Sure, let's set up a five, we see the reason and we'll get it done.
I just had a question about the video security and the phones for the classroom. So what is the timing on that now that we have the money when approved?
Because we don't have the money, right? It's a reimbursement structure. That's right. So exactly, on this Friday, I believe, some money starts to move from town to district, right? There's a timeline of when tax.
Tax collection.
And that I'm going to leave to, basically, Ms. Lou's going to tell me when I can start spending the money. So yes, we already have an appointment next Monday to say, okay, what is the, what risk can the district handle and what chunk of money can we spend at a time? Because there's a 90-day reimbursement window from the state. I am working with vendors on whether they're willing to extend their terms to longer. For instance, Sharp has agreed that they will give us 90 days to pay their invoice. So that gives us potentially some more flexibility of how much can we order? If I can get that invoice and get our money back from the state, then, you know, we can talk and Ms. Lou will tell me what she's comfortable in terms of the burden and the cash flow is what it'll come down to.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, anybody else? Anything?
So stop by. It looks a little weird right now without a board down. I've had to shovel all the furniture out to pull this up here, so.
We did see it when we did our tour, right before the opening of school and it looked great. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So the district recently completed, along with our auditor from PKF, O'Connor Davies, and this is Chris Kopp, Senior Partner from O'Connor Davies. And he completed our audit and he's here to present to the board the audit findings and audit results.
Second time in a row, I got a little bit of a tough act. Last week I had to follow the presentation of the school board of a new school building. And I got to tell you, after watching that, I said, yeah, maybe I shouldn't be up. As I said, my name is Chris Kopp. I'm the partner from O'Connor Davies. That's assigned to your audit. The manager on the job this year was Catherine Rockvogel and Anna Fogo-Lascia. We had two managers on your job this year. And the audit went very well. Before I, I always end, you know, you forget to say certain things. I'd like to thank Lee and Faith for all their help during the course of the audit. And I'd also like to thank your audit committee. Very good conversations with your audit committee, both on the planning side. And then when we did the meeting last week, they had good questions and very engaged. So we appreciate that because that helps us do a better job and keeps us, you know, thinking forward.
Just touch us there.
There you go. All right. So we're going to begin with a quick overview of the required communications that we need to make with the board, also known as those charged with governance. So you'll see that abbreviation throughout. We'll talk about your 2018 results, your revenues expended to your general fund, your operating fund. We'll talk about the major revenues that you have as a district. And we put a five-year history here so you can kind of see your trend and see where you can go in. We'll talk about the expenditures, again, five-year history of how you've done the revenues compared to the expense. We'll talk about your fund balance. You also operate some other funds and we'll just talk a little bit about those. You also operate some other funds, and we'll just talk a little bit about those, you have a school lunch fund, debt service, your debt, and then there's a new, um, CASB announcement this year, Government Accounting Standards Board, related to other post-employment benefits, a fancy term for the health insurance retirees, uh, that you might be looking at. There goes that. So, the required communications. First, Board's responsibility, is to select and implement accounting policies that are appropriate for a district of your size. So, uh, when we come in, we test those transactions, and we see if those policies are meeting the, uh, guidelines that you established, and we're very happy to say that during our tests, uh, your controls seem appropriate for a district of your size. You have to present your financial statement in accordance with the U.S. GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. You have to maintain effective internal controls over your financial reporting, compliance with laws, regulations, provisions of your contracts. You need to provide us with all the documentation, so that we can test and configure audit. And then, most important for you is setting the tone at the top. So, what that means is you have to have an open forum where people can come, if they have issues, they can come and discuss those issues with you. And similar to this forum here, where, you know, you'll have the public come in and talk to you. So, we make sure we read your Board minutes, we see if the public is attending with issues that come up during the course of the year. Our responsibilities, first, we have the deliverables. We have our independent accountants on the report. Very pleased to say that you received an unmodified opinion on that report. This is the highest level of assurance any accounting firm or any firm can provide. We also look at your actual classroom activity, we issue a report on that. Then we have the required communications, those charged with governance, um, here. We have the management there. We also will communicate any forward legal acts that are, um, I don't wanna say that were discovered, but during the course of your audit, we may come across. How we do that is we do, uh, fraud questions, we interview different employees, we rotate it through, Board members, treasurer, staff. We just ask for different people every time, we ask them some questions, and if anything were to come up during those questions, we come to you, the Board, and discuss those issues with you. Uh, we're very pleased to say that nobody did bring anything to our attention, but I do have to point out that that's not the purpose of the audit. Purpose of the audit is financial, not to uncover fraud. Uh, we didn't have any significant difficulties during the course of the audit. In fact, I think for about two weeks earlier than usual, so, the audit went smoothly with the state being about a week later, providing us with the pension information. Uh, no one corrected misstatements, in other words, during the course of any audit, they're always adjusting journal entries that come up, because schools have such a tight timeframe to, uh, file their reports with the state. We're here while the district is still working on its books. So, as transactions come in that occurred after the year, uh, they're all posted in our district records, everything we had. Timeline for the audit, uh, we came in and did our preliminary work in, uh, the middle of May. The field work was the week of August sixth, and we completed everything by September twenty-seventh, and that's the date of your report. So, now onto your general fund. So, what I put here was a quick summary, just so you can see how, how your general fund turned out for the year. We have the five columns, your original budget, that's the one adopted by the Board last year, the final budget after it's been modified by the Board during the course of the year. We have the actual results of the year, we have your encumbrances, and we also have the variance of the final budget. So, if we begin with the third number up from the bottom, you see a million forty five million brackets. If you operated in a perfect world, you received every dollar you anticipated, you spent every dollar, you would've utilized the million forty of your fund balance from the previous year. What's that number made up of? At the end of every year, you have encumbrances. Those encumbrances of purchase orders, we recorded them, on June thirtieth of last year, they weren't received, so those items roll forward to your seventeen eighteen budget. That amounted to about seventy thousand seven hundred dollars. In addition, you appropriated almost nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars of your surplus to help the tax burden. So, instead of raising property taxes, you utilized almost a million dollars of your fund balance to stay within the tax cap. During the course of the year, you can see you modified it by about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the overall cash resolutions, increase in the use of fund balance for expenditures that were planned during the course of the budget. How did we end up? The third column to the left is, if you look up from the bottom, again, three numbers, you'll see five hundred and fifty-nine thousand six eighty-four. So, instead of utilizing surplus, you actually were able to add back to your surplus. So, you were planned on appropriating about a million dollars, you actually had a five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar surplus. How did we get there? That's the last column. The revenues came in about five hundred and seventy-five thousand over the expected plan, and expenditures came in about one million one fifty-six under your spending plan. So, we'll talk about revenues first, and what makes up that variance? Well, again, your budget has many different revenues in it. I picked some of the larger ones with the bigger variances. First one, obviously, the school, is your property tax. That's made up of two components, the STAR, tax for the school, tax relief, and your property tax. You can see there, you have a negative seventy thousand dollar variance, and that's because of the, um, current portion of your tax surcharge. Your taxpayers file agreements, or there might be an error in the assessment rules, those are the ones that you had to refund out of your current budget. The big number though is the two hundred and thirty-five thousand that you see on the day school tuition, you had about five students more than the plan for them, so that generated revenue for the district. In addition, you got about forty-three thousand more than you were planning on state aid, and again, that shows you, because when you put your budget together, you stay conservative, and luckily, the state came in about forty-three thousand dollars when your final spending plan came out. And then you also have refunded prior year expenditures. Those, again, are for purchase orders that have been outstanding for over a year, you look at them, and you void them out, cancel them, uh, then your refund, uh, so you came in about eighty thousand over budget. One line I didn't put on here, where you had a very good surplus, was in your earnings and investment. You came in about a hundred thousand dollars over on that. As you're all aware, the Fed is gonna increase the rates slightly, so if you were able to get a little better earnings on that, and they raised it again the other day, so, that might give you some, uh, headway for next year. How did you get there? Was your five-year study? Uh, we're gonna look at property tax combined, because your tax cap, which you're subjected to, is the combination of STAR and property tax. You can see, five years ago, you levied twenty-five point eight million, this year twenty-seven, so up about a million one over those five years, which is less than five percent over those five-year period. I actually went on the state controllers' website and printed out your tax cap compliance, and you've been compliant for the last five years, or at least, I think it's every year. But over those years, you had years where you were point four, point six, uh, so you've done a very good job of stabilizing the taxes and trying to keep them as low as possible through utilization of both surplus and by coming in and just spending every year. The day school tuition, uh, the last four years has been about a million one, a million two. You don't know that until the students enroll, until a school district asks you to take on by some of their kid. State aid finally has gone up over the past few years, but all the time, you were subject to the withholding on the state aid. They never gave you back that money, but at least you're getting the current year increases. And these five revenues alone, you can see it accounted for almost ninety-eight percent of your revenue, so it's a pretty good cross-section you have done during the recent year. Expenditures, a little tougher, your expenditures, you have many, many departments, so I put them in a group here, so you could at least see all the expenditures. And the first one is general support. You can see you have about a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in there, and it's been the second column on the, on the right. And that was mostly made up of the maintenance and operation of your facilities. So, you save some money on utilities, you save money on repairs and maintenance, and you always save money on some salary stuff. You came in about a hundred eighty-three thousand on your budget, and you see, you spent actually about two hundred thousand less than you spent in two thousand seventeen. On instruction, which is basically your teacher salaries, you came in about four hundred thousand dollars depositing now and too. Most of that is because when you put your budget together, the teachers, the budget for the teachers that are currently on your payroll. People retire, people come, people go. So, you save money when you replace a long tenured teacher with a newer teacher, so that's what that savings is mostly made up of, in addition to some supply accounts that you might not have spent. The next big one is employee benefits, again, about four hundred and sixty-six thousand. The bulk of that appeared in the employee retirement system, the teacher's retirement system, and your medical insurance. ERS and TRS are directly related to your salaries, so as you save money on the other lines, they'll save money on that line. Your health insurance, again, when you hire somebody, maybe the long tenured teacher is married, the new hire is saying, you know, that would be an example of how you save money on your health insurance line. So, overall, you did very good at staying within your budget, in fact, like a million one is an exception. This chart just shows you your results for the last few years. Uh, as long as the blue line is up top, that means your rate surplus, I can see back, okay. Is it reversed? Nope, that's one. Yeah, they haven't touched the screen. You can see, back in two thousand fourteen, you actually had a situation where your expenses exceeded your revenue, but since then, you've been doing a good job of replenishing your fund balance and your surplus, and again, you'll see that on the next line. So, here's your fund balance. This is what everybody is always worried about when you put your budget together, how much money do I have in reserve for emergencies and, and to help balance the budget? And if we just start with two thousand eighteen, we'll go two numbers up, you see the number on the side, one million three sixty-one. New York State only allows you to have four percent of your following year's budget in your unassigned. So, you have four percent there. Overall, you're roughly twenty percent, and that's where you've been for, like, the last three years. The other one you've put away, tax cert money, three million eight. Every community is getting hit with tax certs. What this reserve does is allow you to handle those tax certs, hopefully without bonding. So, what happens is you create this reserve based on the certs, tax surcharges that are in your file, and you have a percentage of those that you think might be successfully put away, that allows you to fund those either through cash and without borrowing, they incurred more interest. The next reserve is the employee benefit preliability. A lot of your contracts always have for payouts when an employee leaves. This is an estimate of the reserve to cover those employees who might retire, that have days on the books that you may have to pay. This allows you not to have to use current funds to fund those. And the retirement system contribution is a reserve for the employee retirement system only, which is your smaller retirement bill. Teachers, it does allow you to have a reserve. But the employees, you can put reserve away, and if you remember some of my presentations over the past few years, you're facing major increases in your employee retirement bills, one of the top digits. By having this reserve, you have a draw, and again, you didn't have to raise current tax dollars to pay those bills, you would assign some of your surpluses to take care of those future expenditures. Then the next line, you see the purchases on order, again, those are those encumbrances I spoke about. So, that eighty-two thousand will roll forward to the eighteen nineteen budget. And then the one million four that's on that line is the amount of money of the surplus that occurred here that you applied to the eighteen nineteen bill, again, to stay within the tax cap and not have to raise taxes that you don't feel you need. As I said, you have three other small funds that you operate. You have your capital projects fund, which currently shows a deficit, and what that is is because you're starting a major capital project, you had to advance some money to cover architectural plans, some legal fees, things like that, before you bond. So, once you bond, the deficit will go away. Your school watch fund has about two hundred eighty thousand dollars in it. Again, that money should be used for one-time expenditures, capital items like kitchen equipment, furniture. You don't wanna use that money to help with the daily operations, because then eventually you'll run a deficit. If you apply that money to recurring expenses, eventually it runs out, you'll be applying money that you want for the education, to have to go to school watch. And then your special purposes donations made at school, where you have, uh, money that was donated to the school district and you use it for specific purposes. The next slide is, I'm trying to capture some of the bonds that you have outstanding in your debt service. So, you can see you have several of your bonds outstanding, uh, totaling about thirteen million dollars. But if you look at your amortization schedule down here, you can see that in five years, you're gonna pay back almost fifty-one percent of those bonds. By the ten-year mark, ninety-seven percent. So, you have a very aggressive payback schedule. In ten years, you'll be there with three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's very good, that's very aggressive. The bonds are all fairly short-term, if you look at them, and you took advantage of the refundings, uh, you didn't go out for twenty years, you probably went out ten, which took that interest savings to uppay those bonds down quicker. So, again, ninety-seven percent payback in two years is a very aggressive schedule. The last item I wanna speak about is, I don't even wanna speak about the lease. This is the other post-employment benefits, we call it CASB seventy-five. About nine years ago, the Government Accounting Standards Board passed a announcement number forty-five, which indicated that, um, all municipalities, and that's throughout the country, had to restart reporting the amount of, uh, the liability by an actuarial calculation of employees' retirement, the health insurance in retirement. CASB forty-five allowed all municipalities to spread it out over thirty years, so you've been amortizing that amount over thirty years. What happened is, a couple of years ago, the, uh, CASB sixty-eight said, yeah, put the liability from your pension systems on your li, your balance sheet also. And they did that because you saw the news articles about states that were very underfunded on their pensions and are in danger of not being able to make their payments, so they wanted municipalities to show that liability in the books, because you're really on the hook for that amount of money. Luckily, here in New York State, we're ninety-eight point four percent on the employee retirement system and a hundred point six-six percent on the teacher's retirement system. So, there really wasn't a major impact as far as liability goes, because the New York State plan is so well-funded. OPEB, on the other hand, is not funded. There is no mechanism to fund it. Health insurance for employees is always on a pageable basis. So, what happened is, they took away the authorization, said, let's take the hit all at once. Since you put the entire pension obligation on, let's put the health insurance obligation on. So, last year, you had a liability on your books, where any of them, about nine point seven million, and this year, you had a reported additional thirty-six million to bring it up to the full amount of liability. So, when you look at your financial statements, you're gonna show a negative unrestricted on the statement net position, but again, I wanna point out, there's no mechanism for you to fund it. Absolutely not yet. So, you've paid all your bills, your current, but this liability is for a teacher starting today, thirty to fifty years down the road. And again, insurance is always paid as you go, and will remain paid as you go in New York State. But this affects, you're gonna see it on every school district in the state of New York this year, you were the first. Next is the counties and towns, and the last one, your managers. So, you're the first ones that can stick your shot on this. But, um, I just wanna make sure the Board understands this is an actuarial calculation. There's no bill outstanding for this. This is an estimate of the future liability, that there's no mechanism currently for you to even write a check to. So, you've done everything you can on a budgetary basis, and, uh, this liability is obviously a liability, and we wouldn't put it on the books, but it is a calculation.
So, how would we find it?
You pay as you go. So, what happens when some of your retirees, you get your bill from a nation, or whatever provider you use.
Used to, Swiss chip, I should.
Okay. And on those, the retirees' bill is there. And that would be, see the, uh, benefit payments, the one million one? That's your bill for the retirees' current health insurance. So, every, that's every retiree's current bill that you pay. So, you've done your thing. Just like, I don't wanna explain the pension, you pay, you get a bill from New York State, you pay it, but they have you put that liability in your books for the unfunded piece. So, now, TRS, like I said, is a hundred point six-six, you have a small asset on your legs, that you can't do anything with. It's not like you can take that cash or borrow an instant, it's just a plan based on an actuarial calculation, show the surplus.
Can I ask this back, the figure for just the retirees or for even the current employees for healthcare?
So, the current employees, assuming based on your history, you know, they, when you provide, again, I'm not an actuary, but you provide them with data, the data hire, they look at how many years the average teacher stays, they look at your turnover rate, and they try to project that teacher A, B, and C will be here and ask the course for them thirty years from now.
So, it's something that's a budget for you every year?
Right. And you do that.
Oh, we do that.
Right. Just wanna make it clear that you paid your bill. Again, I'd like to thank the board for all their time, and, you know, I know it took a long time when you were on schedule, but if there's any questions, I'll be going after to try to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
No. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
If you think of any questions, just on the screen, just how big did we fall, and we'll have to come back and answer any of them.
Thank you.
Lee, was there anything else you wanted to add to that, or is that...
No, I, I just will say that we, um, met with Chris and the finance audit committee last week, and Chris went through a very detailed, um, review of the financials which you received, the final, we went through the draft last week, and you received the final, uh, report today, and they asked some interesting questions, and, um, just for clarification, Chris went into detail, more detail, on the, um, other post-employment benefits, and, um, he gave the same assurances to the committee as he gave you here tonight.
I'm sorry, I was, I was unable to attend the meeting. Was there anything else that came up in the committee, or questions of the committee, or anything else that...
Chris, before you go, was there, do you remember anything else that may have come up in the committee last week? I think, uh, you covered almost everything tonight that may have come up.
Yeah, we talked about the, uh, the bonds.
The bonds.
That schedule, because I believe you're embarking on a new capital project. And OPEB and the pension took up most of the time. And everybody looks at the big number and...
Right, we wanted to make sure that everyone understood what that meant.
That we're concerned about was addressed. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on, we just have a little bit of, uh, business of the board, just a few quick items that we wanted to, um, take care of today, because they're timely, instead of waiting until our next regular meeting. So first, we have, um, business of the board, resolved to approve the personnel action items A through E as outlined below. And again, oh, is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion, I just want to say that our last month, we changed the format a little bit for personnel, we have the items listed there, they are on our agenda for public, um, to see, um, and we're just doing it in this manner, just to condense our personnel items, some of our agreement items, um, just to be more efficient, and if there's any feedback from the public on the way we're doing that, we'd like to hear from you. Okay, all in favor? And then, okay, I go to number two, right? Personnel appointment? Why not? Resolved on recommendation to superintendent of schools to appoint John Spellman to a probationary appointment effective October 3rd, 2018, through October 2nd, 2019, as a monitor at the Tuckahoe Middle School High School on step seven of the CSEA's salary schedule. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion?
I, I will just say, uh, John is a veteran New York City police officer who has recently retired, and we're very happy to have him come on board. He'll be posted at the middle high school, uh, providing, uh, security and, and, and working as a monitor. Uh, we still have one vacancy left at the middle high school, uh, we are aggressively moving forward to, to find qualified candidates, but I think John will be a welcome addition.
We have discussed that before, as a board, we highly support the hiring of the retiring police officers. We thank you, Carl, for bringing us, one, because we know that it's been difficult and very competitive, um, at this point, very difficult to find, and, um, we're very happy to add Mr. Spellman, Officer, Retired Officer Spellman aboard. All in favor? Number three, accept an audit report. Resolved to accept the district's independent audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion?
I just want to say that that was an excellent report in terms of the help of our finances, and that's sort of like your report card in a way.
Yeah.
And it was excellent, so I just want to just commend you for how phenomenal our finances are and truly large duty your efforts, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'd also like to, um, give a big thank you to the business office. Faith Sparks does a magnificent job as treasurer, and everybody else in the business office, Jen Capoci, Kim Cook, and Karen Barrows, because they really worked hard all year on keeping the district's finances in shape, and also for the audit, so they've been all great.
I will agree with Pete, because, um, honestly, without having our fiscal house in order, we cannot do the things that we, we are doing, so I thank you for that. It's been a very, very strong initiative of ours, um, and you know we are on you constantly, so, um...
It's kind of funny how those two presentations are linked in that way, right?
Absolutely.
Because the stuff that Ellen wants to do is not possible.
Without the funding, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. All in favor? Okay, so we're going to now move to adjourn the meeting. Uh, motion to adjourn. Cynthia, second. Pete, all in favor? Thank you.